Well, someone had to register their car as they were flagged.
It will.
It's not suspended.
So we're not taking that off?
Not suspended.
So it's still always there?
Yeah.
If these people go to motor vehicle.
So it's not going to show up like as an outstanding, as an outstanding, but be flagged or suspended.
So if they go to motor vehicle to register a car, they'll have to make this, uh...
As long as a motor vehicle has it in their records.
Do they have it in their records?
Um, they should.
Do we have to send that to motor vehicle?
There's what you mean. I knew there was going to be an update in more of... We do send our components to motor vehicle. There is going to be some type of an update that's coming out, um, in the near future on that as, you know, no longer, we don't have to pay. Whatever they're going to do, we have to do something monthly. They still come out, but what it is, we'll provide them a file, update it, and, uh, whatever. Yeah, this, these will still be, uh, attempted to be collected. It's just that it's, it's not based on, uh, she is not doing it.
It isn't returning that, um, people will come in if they haven't paid a bill from a long time ago and really don't even remember, and they can't register the vehicles.
Exactly.
So they have to come in and they have to pay it in order to get the ticket or the receipt.
Yes, to bring back motor vehicle. I was just wondering, make sure that on the suspension list that it wasn't taken off.
Good point.
So that it, it's not, as long as it's still there for motor vehicle to collect.
Yes.
And it's, it's flagged at motor vehicle.
Yes.
As long as it's around.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, regarding the people that were deceased, um, how long do they stay on there or what, how does that work? Because I know this one person on here, um, died like twelve years ago, and I was just wondering how you eliminate that.
Every fifteen years on the phone.
Okay.
Let me answer your question. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the suspension list as presented?
I'm opposed.
You're second.
Second.
Ryan seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Any extensions? Any carries? Next is, I, um, have been asked to put this on the agenda every, every meeting, so I have put proposed revisions to the ethics ordinance. I have not received anything, and I do not have anything tonight, but I wanted to keep it on here in case there was some comments on this.
Uh, just a comment with comment to the... I did review that ordinance that the CCM put out. I just spent some time and went through it. And I was thinking it would be, it's too bad they don't have a model municipal ordinance that we could take a look at too, which would, uh, might be helpful. But the, the, uh, number, they, they did this based on a number of towns, and I was just looking at the list of towns. There were really no small towns. There were towns that were larger than us, or, and I don't know whether they had any cities either. But I did see some things in there that were, I think, worth talking about. So at some point, if we're ever going to do anything with the ordinance, I think we have to set, maybe the, maybe there's no will to do that at this point, but I'm, I'm speaking for myself now. But, um, I think we'd have to sit down and spend some time. I don't think, uh, it's, it's the kind of thing you have to set aside a half an hour, forty-five minutes and, and if people want to do that, you know, so. That's all, so.
My sense, I speak for myself, but I think the consensus is that this ethics ordinance is terrible, uh, and it either needs to be revised or replaced, so, um, at some point I think we need to see that one addressed.
Then I will keep this on the agenda, and if there is a plan or if you wanted to present some suggestions for how you want to proceed.
Didn't the Ethics Committee, didn't they tell us that they would be willing to work to revise the ordinance, um, if, if we supported it? Because I, I wouldn't, I know, I know Brian would like to get rid of it, but I, I think that it came about for a reason, and I think that I would personally like to at least look at options to maybe continue, you know, to have an ethics ordinance, but change it so that the way it is now, you know, doesn't affect, you know, people, uh, when there's no, you know, wrongdoing. So, yeah, I would, I would like to see if maybe they would be willing to present to us an updated ordinance that we could then review and approve.
They, they had submitted revisions, and we did not ask them. Do you remember that?
Yeah, do we have another copy of that? Because I'd like to...
I can certainly do that.
Although I think the talk was to replace, it's not totally correct if everybody's going to say ordinance, but on that, but as it is, I mean, it's not working.
I just don't want to have nothing, I guess. It's my only concern, that's all.
I did give the entire packet that came from CCM, Fred. It's like this thick to the chair.
Thicker than, this was a summary, you know.
Yeah, I gave it to George. If you want the whole packet, it's huge. I could certainly make that available, but I did not until you asked me to. Tremendous amount of information.
And what, what is this exactly? This is not the state ordinance that you were talking about. This is a CCM, sort of a model motor vehicle.
It's what they call a toolkit. So within there, they had some ordinances from other towns, and they had some, um, investigation and work, research, if you'd say, that has been done, um, from legislative folks, is that right, Fred? You have the, I gave everybody a copy of the table of contents and the information in it. Again, um, it's a complicated matter, and it took us two or three years, I think, to put the first ordinance together. So I would imagine that a decision would take that long.
Or we wait and see where the state is going to come up with.
I think they have assigned a task force.
It's a task force.
Well, when were they going to, it's like a working model you did, Fred, by the...
Well, they would come out with, if, if they passed a bill. I mean, that's always, yeah, it's not, but nothing is passed yet.
Oh.
That's what's proposed during...
That's their proposed bill. It's, it, you know, they might take it up, but then by, it would be next year they'd come back with a recommendation at some point. But that's, uh, I have to deal with the State Ethics Committee as a commission, so I'm familiar with, with them, and it would be some of the...
The time is now seven forty-five. The Portland Library will be closing in two thirty minutes.
Some of the same requirements, I'm sure, are, will be, would be weaved in. It would be a tie, that would be tied to the State Ethics Commission. And I, I do have some problems with provisions that if somebody has a late filing of a report, that there would be an automatic referral for. For example, that's one thing that, it's in our ethics ordinance. It's an automatic referral, it could be an automatic referral if there's a complaint based on the fact that, that somebody handed in a report a few days late. It, the word is "shall" in, in there, it's not "may," and so, um, anyway, it, it would be next year, to answer your question before you see anything.
Okay, good on there, and as we proceed, we'll have some additional discussion.
Thank you.
And the Ethics Commission may also have some updates. We'll move on to letter C. We wanted to provide you with an update on the land acquisition for Midle Hattem Road, which we have a purchase and sale agreement that we have signed, and, um, we did receive a report from Amy Valencourt, who's with Ty and Bond, on the Phase One environmental review. So Amy has come here tonight to give us a report on that and to suggest perhaps some additional work that needs to be done. So Amy Valencourt.
Hi. So I'm a licensed environmental professional. I work for Ty and Bond, and I oversaw the Phase One site assessment for the Midle Hattem Road property. We did identify a couple concerns, um, some more recent, some historic, first being that they had a refueling pad there at the site. This refueling pad, according to Mr. Peakin and a lot of the municipal folks, didn't have to tow any stores per se. They would have a tanker truck come onto the site, pull over the pad, and fill up the equipment. But during, you know, high peak operations, it was probably running there every day. In the middle of the refueling pad, they did have a drain. The drain was specific for keeping water from pounding there during rainy events, and the drain was supposed to be covered during fueling, but of course, there's nothing to say that that really ever occurred. So we thought it was an environmental concern. If they had an overfill, like in your gas stations there at times, where the refueling equipment, um, you know, would have gone into the drain and then just into the soil or gravel and, um... We also had a wash pad for equipment, and the wash pad was located very close to the park. So, um, again, you know, you're working with diesel-powered equipment, and you're hosing it off, and you're hosing all the troughs that leave the site. We worry about petroleum impacts going into the door, impacting soil and groundwater. In addition to those more recent concerns, we had some historical ones. The property itself was used as quarry back to 1893, was the earliest we could track it. That was in the, um, early ad hoc search for the town of Portland, being in topographic terms. We also found varying, um, histories of the quarrying. There was quarrying, um, to a point where they removed it, you know, ten, twenty feet, and then it was regraded, filled, and then quarried again at some other time, and the quarrying operations were on and off. So fill material, bringing it in was, um, a concern. Sand and gravel pits in the environmental industry are really notorious historically for dumping. You know, there were these big pits, and if somebody wanted to make more usable land and eventually build on it, they would let people bring in material. Sometimes it's industry having the material. We did interview a lot of people in the town, people that were familiar with the property. Nobody ever remembers anything being brought in, but again, unless you're watching the property twenty-four seven, you know, you're only students, the information not for daddy. One other, um, concern that we had was the historic rail. Rails are also notorious to have some contamination in the rail bed material, because again, it's fill material. A lot of times used industrial waste to make these rail beds. And although it's not on a big portion of the site, it's just adjacent, but a lot of the impacts leave. So we tried to go in and be very thorough and identify, um, the environmental concerns that we found, and then present them to the town so they could determine what their, their risk is going. But we did recommend Phase Two. You know, we can't say with these data gaps that the property is clean. We recommended some soil sampling. We would have to evaluate whether, if there is soil impact, they would actually, you know, have impacted the groundwater, and then we would go with the groundwater if that were in place. And so those were our recommendations for the property.
Questions?
There's never a, was there any incidents on the property?
We never found anything at DEP, the Fire Marshal, um, any reports on by the town that there was any incident of dumping or anything like that. I spoke directly with Deanna Rose and Brett Kelsey, you know, people who knew about the property and knew the history, so.
Your, your recommendation, Amy, your recommendation, uh, going forward would be more testing? Is that what you're suggesting?
I would say, you know, we always look on the side of our client and their liability and risk. You know, if it were mined in 1893 and, you know, deep down, they filled the pit with some industrial stuff from brown stone, or whatever, um, you know, that has happened in other places. So we want to minimize your risk and take the ownership of the property, and we would go for some sampling to give you that comfort.
So Phase Two would be some, uh, bore samples?
Correct.
Well, well, uh, samples.
We wouldn't necessarily jump to well sampling unless, you know, sometimes in these situations, timing is never given schedule and needed to make a decision. And so if we have one shot, yes, when I get the drilling out there, I would put in a couple wells. But typically, I would go look at the soil first, if I found soil impacts, then I would look to the groundwater.
Or, or, or...
We had been fooled, uh, actually, we found on some of the old mapping in the town that there were two wells on the site, but it turns out that, um, they're not existing, at least that we could find today, that they, they have been to determine the production of aquifer below.
How old, do you know how old those wells would have been, someone there would have been named?
It looked like it wasn't too long ago on the maps. I believe it was in the nineties. I'd have to go back and look.
And they were to determine?
The, um, potential yield of the aquifer below that could have been a drinking water, you know, we just were drinking water area.
Will it result?
Yeah. Any other questions?
It's the cost of Phase Two.
I did throw out some preliminary prices to Susan. You know, one day of drilling, try to get ten, uh, samples in, it would be about twelve to fifteen thousand.
I have another copy of the report, if anyone wants to leave it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next, um, item is related to what Amy has reported, and that is a resolution to, not to spend money, but to move money into the capital fund for purposes of land acquisition. And we have talked about this. If we do that, then there would be dollars in the capital fund in order to purchase land.
You'll park it there, actually.
Yes.
When would the decision be made to go ahead with Phase Two? I mean, are you...
Um, tonight. You would give the, uh, go ahead to do so. I mean, when you do the Phase One, it's a review of all of the records and the interviews, but no scientific sampling is done. So due, due to the paper history, Amy has recommended that we do this.
I mean, could we make that recommendation along with the resolution, or do you want a separate, a separate motion?
Tom, is there anything fiscally that you would like the board to have?
Yeah, let me start with you. Deborah, would be good?
Okay.
I have no problem with the resolution, but are we going to go and take your attention to discuss this and the additional costs that's involved?
Aye.
For Phase Two and negotiation of the purchase of the property?
I don't have an executive session scheduled.
I would like that to...
I don't think you can.
I would like that also, um, executive session.
I, um, it gets a little bit, I, I will double check on that. I'm always very careful about executive session. I don't just let you go in the session until you're...
Can we hold it then till we, if we can move to...
Well, I would move the adoption of the resolution.
Yeah, and then hold the, hold the Phase Two till the next meeting. Can we do that?
Yep.
Give you an opportunity to get you a true proposal in front of...
Sure, that'd be helpful. Okay, that's good. Yeah, and I'll double check with Carrie Olson as to how we proceed and make sure that we notice it properly. Okay. So, Brian, you said the resolution you wanted to, is the resolution?
Yes.
So you'd be second? Yeah, he is second, so.
Next.
Whatever date you want, I guess. No.
Okay, well, you have to pass the resolution, and then you would set the town meeting.
Under the discussion on this, the, uh, this is just going to be parking the money for now, and there's no, there's no commitment or...
Yes, no.
I don't have any sense of money if we end up, if something came up and, and so we moved this money, but then we didn't, for whatever reason, buy the property, but...
It's in your capital fund for land acquisition. It's not, hold on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in your capital fund. It is not spent.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that gives us some time to review this particular matter.
If you don't do it, if you don't move the money, then the money will last.
Right. Okay, so the motions that made and seconded, is there, all in favor? Aye. And opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries? And now I need a motion to have the town meeting, which the soonest you could do it, I would recommend, would be your next regularly scheduled meeting, which is June third.
Would we go for Goldwood?
Well, they're two separate matters.
I would.
But don't forget, they're two separate matters. So the town meeting would occur previous to that discussion, unless you want to have a special meeting.
I'd like to see, you know, talk about the Phase Two and...
I will tell you on June third.
Yeah.
Okay, there's also a presentation that the Parks and Recreation Commission are going to be making. They're going to take an hour. They want an hour for their, um, presentation on the Route Seventeen project. So just timing-wise, um...
Can we put the executive session then, that way, or do you think that's too much?
Yes, you can, but I just want to warn you in case you try to keep the agenda light.
Let's either we do it then or the next week after, or what I do.
Yeah, yeah. Or, as I said, you can always have another time for meeting. It doesn't have to be that night.
You push it out a little bit, give her more time.
Sounds good.
The meeting's just, that's the money.
No, the town meeting is separate. They're talking about the executive sessions that they want to have in regard to this specific matter.
What are you saying, like, the whole, the special town...
But is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know that, thank you.
So the town meeting is just June?
Yeah.
Is there a motion for the town meeting to be on June third at what?
Seven twenty? If you have seven fifteen, do you think that's too...
Seven fifteen, yeah, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Kathy seconded. So a special town meeting for this resolution? Sharon?
Uh huh.
On June third at seven fifteen. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries? It'll be in this room. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions?
Uh, I think we do.
We have, uh, one, Kevin Anderson, to Long Range Capital.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries?
I have one.
Do you have any others?
No, that's the first.
Okay.
David Richardson to the library board.
Is there a second? 反对 by Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries? Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
Good night. You too.
Can we, Susan, mention, or I'd like to mention, planning and zoning is shy. We should look at those appointments and make one pretty quickly, because if they have one person out, they, they don't have a quorum.
They need one full-time member and two alternate.
Yes.
And zoning.
Yes, thank you. Um, we need to set the mill rate for 2015, sixteen. Do you have a motion in front of you?
That's the blue one.
Sure.
Resolution for the selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, May twentieth, twenty fifteen. Adoption of the mill rate for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. Whereas the 2015-2016 budget, the Town of Portland estimates that four million, five-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars will be received from the state of Connecticut. Without this, the mill rate would be thirty-eight point one-two mills. Now therefore be it resolved that the mill rate for the fiscal year 2015-2016 be and is hereby set at thirty-two point thirty-four mills.
Is, do you move adoption?
I move adoption, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Howard. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. Motion carries. The next is adoption of the non-union administration pay plan for 2015, 2016. And these were emailed to you previously as well. Is there a motion for adoption? Is there a motion for adoption?
So, move.
Is that Howard?
Yep.
Is there a second? Second by Kathy.
I have a que, just a question.
Yes.
I'm looking at the councilor one on first, and that, the move to nine sixty, is that due to the minimum wage increase?
Yes.
That was my question.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments or questions, or discussion? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed, any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Next is adoption of other budgets, and because the general fund budget is passed, and within the general fund budget, you pass, or the town passed, transfers into the animal control fund, the town aid road fund, the youth services fund, the resource recovery fund, the building maintenance fund, and the parks and recreation fund. You can't approve these budgets until the general fund budget is adopted. So, that's why this is brought to you tonight. And the animal control fund and so forth, all of those numbers are listed for you in your resolution, and I entertain a motion for adoption. So, move. Kathy, is there a second? Given by Brian. Any questions? This is work that you've already done, really. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed, any extensions, motion carries? The next is a resolution for the airline trail improvements, including complete streets, general fund transfers, and capital non-recurring supplemental appropriation. And this, similar to the previous resolution, means that dollars that were unspent this year, and specifically nine thousand two hundred fifty dollars from the zoning enforcement department regular payroll item, and eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars from the economic development commission, for a total of seventeen thousand five hundred, would be transferred from the general fund into the capital non-recurring fund for availability to the airline trail and complete streets project.
So, move, second.
Discussion? This will also need a town. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed, any extensions, motion carries? And then we would need, you can put this on the same town meeting that you previously asked for, so this would be a second agenda item, Sharon? Is there a motion to approve the town, special town meeting for this item be included on June third, special town meeting?
What's the seventh?
You can have them both at the same time, as I understand.
Oh, then so, yeah, I'll move to have that.
Tom, do you have any? It's a special town meeting, and at a special town meeting, you can only act on those items that are listed on the agenda, nothing else.
The votes are on the agenda, right?
So, that's June third at seven fifteen here in the Mary Claire Room. Who made that motion?
I did.
Howard, is there a second to that town meeting, the agenda item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed, any extensions, motion carries? Okay, so, when that meeting is held, there'll be two votes, because there'll be two items on that agenda. One would be the one to do with land acquisition, and the second item would be the matter concerning the airline trail and complete streets, general fund transfers to the capital fund. Okay, thank you. The next item, our superintendent of schools is here tonight, and Laura Webb is here as well, and it has to do with fourth quarter transfers, there's two items in regard to our schools. The first one is the school lunch fund, and the second one that we will address is a fourth quarter transfer to the maintenance fund from the Board of Education. I'm sorry? Good evening, would you like to address these topics first, or?
I'm here, or?
It's better there, so we can certainly hear you, Philip, thanks for coming.
Lauren's here also to help me, specifically probably with the, with the school lunch contract, so good evening.
Good evening, thanks for coming.
Nice to see you all. Back in April, the Board of Education unanimously approved these, both these transfers. Mr. Hurley was there for the discussion. I know, because I talked with both Lauren and Tom, that the issue of the school lunch program is probably the more contentious or questionable issue. I stand before you, a thirty-three-year veteran of public education, I have run three different programs in three different districts, and all three of them have run in the red. It is a very difficult business to serve lunches to children, but we must, because our children need those lunches. There are many children in this town who require both free and reduced lunch, or who qualify for free and reduced lunch. It's a, it's a very difficult business, but frankly, it's not a business that I want to go into, and I, I don't want to manage the school lunch program. There are federal and state requirements that make it very challenging for us to do, and that's why we have hired Sedexo to manage this. This is a budgeted item, this was in our approved budget, and that's why the Board of Education unanimously approved this transfer. Laura has worked hard this year, she has completed both state and our federal audit, both of which we received accommodations, and about how our kitchens are being run. Again, it's a, it's a bit challenging, we have four separate kitchens in five schools, and we have to pay for the employees in those schools. And this, I have found in my, my path, that the smaller the schools are, the more challenging it is to make them run in black, just because you have to hire the employees to make the lunches, or the employees to serve the lunches, or the employees to transfer the lunches, as we do in this district here, because most of the work is done at high school. We have increased labor costs, we've had, as you probably know, increased food costs due to many of the federal government changes from the First Lady regarding healthy foods, and some of the initiatives that she has championed throughout this, for all school districts throughout the country. We've rela, they've been relaxed a little bit, or will be relaxed next year, but as of now, we're still forced to follow those. We work hard to get federal subsidies, because it offsets the cost to the town, we work hard to get state subsidies, but that means we have to meet the requirements of the healthy foods, and so, fresh vegetables, we try to provide, we don't try, we do provide certified meals, meals that, that meet those requirements. So, that's the background to it, again, I know it's a challenge for any board, it has been for me and Sharon, and also Wendy Parker, but it is one that most districts face, and frankly, the ones that don't face it are the larger ones. And, and, you know, when we have, as I said, these small kitchens that operate, it makes it much more challenging. Laura, I don't know if you want to add anything else to, to our contract?
We did go out to bid, this is the first year, we went out to bid at the food service program. Initially, we looked at running it ourselves, we looked at partnering, partnering with East Hampton, and it worked out. And then we went out to bid, we actually had three different vendors that were interested, and only one responded to the bid, so, and that's the next one.
We're also trying to offset our costs by reducing breakfast, so we piloted this year, they actually have been successful, and have helped the account a bit, we're looking to expand those to middle school and high school next year, and we'll probably get, give the impression or back to our, at the rest of the waters, it is important for our students. So, we continue to look at ways to lower costs, and I will look at, at ways, Laura, and I will look, continue to look at, at ways to lower costs without impacting the quality of our food.
Really, the real challenge is increasing the, the real challenge is increasing the number of lunches we serve. We're restricted in how much we can charge, how much we can roll up.
And also what you can sell. And that's the big thing, right?
And, and good food, as we all know, costs money.
And it doesn't sell like french fries. Right.
Bring back the fries.
We do find candy and fries, but we wouldn't eat federal fries.
You're going to create a black market for candy.
Could you give us a general sense of the numbers, now, what are we talking about, how many kids?
Sure.
What are the federal subsidies, what are the state subsidies, how much does it actually cost?
I'll give you a little bit, all right?
Okay, my, my sense of this, and the history of this, you're going through this, is that Sedexo has gotten involved, and it's the only player in town, and they charge what they charge, and we had a history of this a couple of years ago, where they tried to charge more, or out of the fact, et cetera, et cetera, so just give me a sense of this.
So, we've, we've served over seventy thousand meals to this point. Our...
From what, from what?
From this school year, all right. There's a little bit of a decrease from last year, but I'm not factoring in, those are just lunch meals, that doesn't factor in, correct? So, this is some numbers that Laura, I just ordered you today. We, our student reduced-priced meals are similar about, although seventy thousand, and correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, although seventy thousand, thirty-seven hundred meals are, we receive or produce subsidy, and twenty-two, almost twenty-two thousand meals, we reduce, we, we, we receive free, their students free lunches.
How many kids are getting reduced?
I don't, I don't know if you, I haven't asked you.
That's either reduced or free, or both, actually.
How many, I'm sorry, what's the...
How many kids are getting reduced meals, how many are getting free meals?
There's about a total of twenty-five thousand meals that are served.
I know, I'm trying to figure out how many students.
That number, I don't think it would make sense. We, we are, we're less than twenty percent, so, let's say maybe around one forty, one sixty, is the total number of free and reduced. I can certainly get you that for our...
So, that, that's basically the data I have now, and we could put together additional information for you, but it's similar to, to...
And the rumors are that kids don't eat any of these meals, is that true, or is that...
Well, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
By eating in everyone's kitchen, in everyone's cafeteria, so, they look like they're...
Very different guy to me, you're better than I am.
Well, I, I have to say that I see kids eating in all, all of those, and I can speak, you know, firsthand. I was in Delhi the other day, I was famished, I went into, to the kitchen, we had some quick finger foods, and I did see waste, and, but what is, it's vegetables, and I hear this all the time, we're required to put them on for play, kids. I raise six kids, and I know that it's very hard to get them to eat the vegetables. So, that's where I see, that's where I hear from, from the staff themselves, if they weren't required to put that food on.
So, what would happen, if you're talking about a hundred and forty kids, whatever that number is, if you just, if you just fed them on your own? What are you losing in terms of federal subsidies, you won't, you won't pay? Right, so what's the cost, and what's the...
Yeah, I, I've never done that calculation of what, what it could cost us, you're saying to...
Sure, well, that would make sense to me, that we would do that calculation to...
Somehow figure out how to offer it, but then we'd be identifying those kids, which we're not, which we're, we're restricted from doing. Laura, I don't know if you have any additional comments about?
Yeah, we would be losing, we have, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in subsidies.
That's in monetary or monetary and food, because we also do get government surplus.
That's what we're getting in state and federal, that's what we received last year in state and federal.
But they also give us subsidies.
Does that include the commodity? The value of the commodity?
No, that's right, it's right.
It does not?
It does not.
Do you know what the reimbursement fee is, or is it zero, or free?
Um, yeah, I'll have that in front of me.
We average about four dollars, I suppose, a hundred thousand dollars.
But obviously, this is a service, because the difference between the student free and reduced, and the total, you know, is almost fifty thousand meals. So, obviously, there's a lot of people, a lot of families that are...
Twenty-five thousand meals, sorry?
What did I say?
Twenty-five thousand.
So, I, I'm calculating, it's about twenty-five thousand free and reduced, and the total is seventy thousand, so, about fifty thousand meals.
About forty-five thousand, or...
The subsidies, the subsidies we're receiving are not just for free, we also get subsidies for just serving healthy meals. We get subsidies for running a breakfast program, so that when I throw that number of a hundred and fifty, it's not, that's not just covering the free and reduced kids, that's covering some of our other programs that we're running. It covers milk, there's milk subsidy.
And then, of course, the next question, you're getting the paid portion of the revenues, the paid portion, the adults and the...
I don't have broken that finally, but we collected a hundred last year, because that's a whole year, we collected a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
And with the sixty thousand dollars, then it's...
Yes, it just seems to me that we should do that analysis, and, actually, we're going to, I don't know that we're going to do it tonight, but, I mean, it just makes sense to me that we do that analysis, or go to the subsidies, the hot, what are you doing with them?
The board actually talked about, they feel very strongly that they want to continue to have a school lunch program in all our schools. And when we pass the budget, we have concluded what we're going to need to kick into the school lunch fund, we're required to keep a separate fund for the school lunch, which barrier it can do with that budget. So, we, the board recognized it, it's going to be funded, we put it, built it into our budget, to move it into that special fund that we're required to keep.
Am I right, though, that you're tapped into Sedexo potentially, right? I mean, they are the player out there, right?
They're the player out there, and the contract with Sedexo is a fact, they get paid thirty-five thousand dollars to administer it. That's, that's the charge for them to come and run the program.
But we don't have a choice as far, I mean, there'd be a choice, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
We went out to bid, nobody was...
Was it, was it two years ago we had the problem, where they came back midway through the year and raised the rates? Yeah, that was...
Yeah, two years ago they had a minimum requirement.
My concern is, what's to stop them from doing that again, and then having to transfer, you know, eighty thousand dollars, or a hundred? You know, I mean, that's, that's really the main concern, is that, you know, there's, if no one else is going to bid on this, I mean, then that, that's a scary thought, that we are held hostage to Sedexo right now.
The prior contract was, it's a five-year contract, renewable every year, the state, again, the state mandates that, it mandates that, how the contract has to be. So, the prior contract actually guaranteed us some income, which Sedexo gave us, and then they forfeited their management fees unless they could make money. So, they went four years of leaving money on that contract, and on the fifth year of renewing it, they said we can't renew it without getting some kind of fee, and that's when it came to us, we got bid.
That's two years, exactly.
Yes, so, when we renegotiate, when we went out to bid, they, you know, eyes are wide open, they didn't guarantee us any income, and they said, here's what we need to make to run the program, thirty-five thousand dollars, not if we make money or we don't. Thirty-five thousand dollars, not if we make money or we don't make money. It's thirty-five thousand dollars to run the program. So they're two very different looking contracts now. And given the experience, like, you know, I think that, you know, other companies that are, are business, it's a top business to run, and they chose not to do that.
And as I said before, they're on, whether districts decide to do it themselves or to bid out, there are very few districts that are in the block.
Districts that are in the black have a very high free and reduced population. So they're making the money off the, they usually get that these so high that they don't even have to charge for lunch. All kids are considered free and reduced. Those are the ones that make money. Those are the ones that can hire their own dieticians, their own managers. And right now, we share that with Rock Hill for SEDEXO. So for us to run it ourselves, we're gonna have to hire full time staff.
Is the sixty thousand dollar transfer in order to meet their fee? Is that what it's for?
That's part of it. The, the fund, there's a fund, Fund O Five, that's sitting on the town books. And it's gonna have a deficit of sixty thousand dollars unless we put some money into it. So the Board of Ed recognizes that and said, let's take it out of the Board of Ed fund and run it for this.
What happens if you don't do that?
There'll be a sixty thousand dollar deficit in that old five fund.
But this was budgeted.
And an unspent sixty thousand dollars in the operation.
What did you budget for when you budgeted? Was it sixty thousand? It was, okay. So, yeah.
So, all right, I just wanted to reiterate that then it would also mean that the sixty thousand dollars in the operational account that was designated for that purpose, that wouldn't have been spent.
So the sixty thousand, if it doesn't get transferred to O Five, it's gonna go back to the town most likely. And then the town's gonna have to figure out what to do with this fund that has a deficit.
Two years ago, we came back, I believe it was twenty or thirty thousand that were shorted out to make a guaranteed profit, I guess they had in their contract. We were supposed to change that all out. Last year, you came back, I believe you got fifty thousand on appropriation, again, like this for transfer. And now, and then this year, you're looking for sixty. So it's like three years in a row.
This is their money.
I know it's their money, but we're transferring. You know, we have to get things. And I wonder, why is it not budgeted so that we don't have to come with these large amounts of money for transfers?
That is the town rule. The Fund O Five is a town fund. It's the town, it's a fund I manage. It's with board. It's a town fund. So when they come and budget it, in their budget, they got approved by all their department. Now, with any fund, when they move the money out, it goes to you. Similarly, when we go to the maintenance, when we go to O Eight. So it comes out, it goes to them. So it's just, it's just that, it's just, right now, it's just an approval process for, we know that this is in a deficit position and run in a deficit position. The board has noticed that, they've budgeted it. So now we're to the point where if not, now, now the financial statements of the town, they have a negative sixty thousand dollars. We don't want that. It'd be terrible. So you want them to make the move, put the money in, to break even. I mean, to do this.
Why, why don't we budget that earlier? Not, and not look for transfers? That's what I wanna know. After three years, why can't we have the right amount for the end, so we don't have to relook?
They budget, they budget in theirs, but we have to transfer over into our account.
Well, but if I...
It's coming out of the Board of Ed budget. And the other component is out of town budget. All those other ones are coming out of town, gentlemen. When I transfer all the other funds?
Yeah.
That's my side.
That's your one, I understand.
This is in their side. So we gotta authorize, you guys just need to authorize the money to go over. Although you do it because of the budget. It's a formality.
I think there's three components for revenue, right, Carl? There's the subsidy, the money that comes from the USDA, that's National School Lunch Program. Then there's the money that is paid at the cash register by students and staff and special events. And now, they're short sixty thousand dollars to the bottom line. So there's a subsidy coming from the Board of Education's budget, which they predicted, right? And I, I just, for edification, that is what we're talking about.
I just wanna know why are they short? Why, why are your estimates out of par?
Their estimates are not par.
They're not far off. Their, their estimates are right, Carl. It's just that they're transferring for the difference of the shortage of what happened last year.
You don't make enough at the register, because they're restricted as to how much they can charge.
I understand.
And they don't have enough for the subsidy.
We're talking roughly five, six thousand dollars a month that they're adding. Are you off that much? At six thousand dollars?
With the revenue?
It's the thirty-five thousand dollars plus whatever. That's, that's what you're saying. So you're losing, what is it, twenty-five thousand dollars shortage for the year?
I did a breakeven analysis. We would have to sell about a hundred and six, two thousand lunch meals to break even. Grab about a hundred. So until we can use up more lunches to cover fixed costs, we're gonna lose money. And we're working, we're trying to, you know, check at that by starting with, you know, doing some more breakfast.
Promotional.
Looking at serving more brown bag lunches when there's a half day. So, you know, we're trying to chip at that number, but until we can get to that breakeven point, the program tells us nothing about even.
Sounds like a mechanical thing.
Do they ever like partner with, uh, I don't know.
Sounds like the transfers are mechanical things.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of budgeted.
Yeah, it does.
I partner with Education Connection for running. I have to pay for the employees. I have to pay for the food. I paid, I paid Education for Connection to run. The Board of Ed still has to give money on a yearly basis, in addition to the contract that we paid to Education Connection. So it's a challenging business.
It sounds to me like this is a more mechanical bookkeeping thing than it is anything else. It's not that it wasn't budgeted. It's just...
This is an accounting thing.
It's an accounting thing.
Yeah. We knew what was gonna happen.
And it's there, and the money's there. So I don't see...
It's costing from our budget to the town.
Yeah. So I don't see...
I understand all of that. It's just that a couple of years ago, we talked about this, and we talked about going through an analysis to figure out whether it makes sense. And I don't, I have no interest in micromanagement. I have no idea about school lunches. It just seemed to me that you would go through that analysis to see if there's some way around that.
You know what? We did go through the analysis, and that's why we put it in our budget to move the money. Before, we didn't have it in our budget. And we needed to kind of take some of our savings from someplace else and move it in there. But now, we look at it, and we're predicting it's going to lose money, and we built it into our budget.
Except I think the analysis would be knowing some of these answers. We've been asking to do the analysis, so...
We know with SEDEXO last year, and I said, you know, at one point, there was a calculation that maybe it would pull the obvious choice and make full subsidy. And they said the number that you would have to run to breakeven, couldn't do it. They said based on the amount of money that you get, subsidy, there's no way to go with four or three.
Well, if yourself pizza's an appetizer.
Doesn't matter, you still would make an analysis. And well, if you have the analysis, providing healthy, you know.
I am of adoption of the resolution made for you.
Second.
Second is I.
Fred.
Discussion.
Second.
Second is I.
Fred.
Discussion.
Are you budgeting, are you planning on budgeting for next year on these deficits in a different way? So that we don't have to be transferring money? Are you gonna do this again next year?
I think technically, if I understand him, we can't do it. When we met, Susan and I, Anton, talked about the options about whether or not we had to do it. Because in our new approved budget, we have budgeted sixty thousand dollars.
That was gonna be my question. So we're projected to keep on this sixty thousand?
We're hoping that it's not gonna be sixty.
Yeah, yeah.
We are.
And how would you reduce the breakfast?
Sell more.
How would you reduce the deficit?
So one is, we're gonna offer breakfasts at breakfast at the middle school and the, and the high school.
Yeah.
I wanna take a look at...
No, excuse me, if there's something. If that doesn't make money, that could be running actually into a larger deficit.
Well, we, we pivoted this year, Carl. So we actually think that it isn't gonna lose money. We actually think that that's gonna, we, we made more money. Whether the serving breakfast at Brownstone, for instance, helped to this account this year?
Make money with breakfast?
Making money or making it less of a pain in terms of losing money.
The state, yeah. State also gives us additional money, because it's one of the...
As motivation to offer breakfast.
To offer breakfast.
So by taking that money, even if, even if we lose money, the money that we'd be taking would offset that to offset the losses for our whole lunch program?
Yeah. They subsidize the breakfast at, adopt so many pennies or whatever per meal served. They subsidize the kids that are getting free and reduced breakfasts. And then they give you kind of a, it's five thousand dollars per location, just to serve breakfast.
The contract they have right now with SEDEXO?
It's gonna be a second.
To SEDEXO. Do they have a guaranteed profit clause in there? Like they did before?
No, no, that's gone. Gone. That's, that's why they're very different looking contracts.
So Carl, let me also say to you that besides the breakfast, we're looking at serving brown bag lunches when we have half days, which we haven't done. We're looking, we have now successfully launched, or will very shortly successfully launch, the easier options for parents to pay, so that, so they can pay online. And I saw that that made some kind of a positive hit, when we introduced that in New Park, several years ago. Made it easier for parents.
Didn't, didn't you purchase a swipe system?
That's what will be eventually initiated.
We have the, we have the new point of service system is in place. The kids will have cards, so we have, you know, fair tracking of how many meals are being served. The next step in that whole system is giving parents access to go put money into the kids' accounts. And I think, you know, we might see it, well, it becomes easier to pay.
Sure.
Everybody can do it online after all the years.
Now, on the free and reduced lunches, if the kids are just taking them, and because they're not paying for them, or some kids just dumping them, are they, are they utilizing the food that would give them with the service? Because we're gonna be paying for that no matter what, right? It's quite a deal. Is, are we getting a good bang for our money? For, for the free and, and...
See, free and reduced, again, I can go back and verify the rates, but it, it covers the cost of the meal. Yes.
Are they eating? Are they eating?
Everything but the vegetables.
We have to, we have to make it available. We have to make it available.
They're drinking the milk. They're having the cookie or the low-fat dessert. And they're eating the main course.
Not the vegetables.
Not all with the vegetables.
Can we send Carl down there to make sure this gets... Check it out.
Carl brings up many of the age-old questions about these programs. We're bringing up questions that are very legitimate and have been asked. And some districts, because of their size, are able to address them better. But we have a very small number of lunches that are served. And when you...
In four different places.
Yeah, I understand.
Your labor costs.
Transportation.
I mean, you need to equal at each school, one to serve, one to bring out the money, regardless of whether you sell one lunch or a hundred. You need to equal at twenty.
And they're working hard.
Is that gonna change? I know, you know, there's been talk about, you know, Valley View and the extended waiting and possibly closing that. Would that change the, you know, that'll obviously change the dynamics of that school with the number of students. It's, you're still gonna need two people no matter what.
The only thing that would change is if you decided to close, if the town decided to close one of those schools, and then that would lower.
There's a motion that's been made and seconded on this resolution. We need a vote. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Laura, and thank you, Carl. Time on that topic. Now we'll move on to the next topic. Go ahead, Carl.
So, also unanimously approved was a transfer of up to, but no more than a hundred thousand dollars to the Board of Education Maintenance Fund, due to about over one percent savings on, on our budget. You know, we've, we've have increased open choice funding this year. We have, due to the Florida's efforts, have increased Medicare reimbursements. Obviously, our fuel and utility costs have decreased. And you know, Ryan knows particularly, that the Board of Ed is committed to addressing some of the needs at our particular buildings, and have identified them in a five-year plan. And so unanimously voted to use some of that savings, budget savings, to focus on some of the school needs. Our soccer fields, our exterior doors, painting at the biz, painting the gym floor at the biz, and window treatments, both at Hilderschlie and at the biz. All have been approved by the board. If you remember, they did walkthroughs in each of the five buildings. And these are part of the plan that they have created for this budget process.
Questions?
I'll move the resolution. Second.
Made by Howard, seconded by Fred. Discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom and Laura. The next item is the Connecticut Seller Saver Fire Museum. And Mike Tierney is here tonight. Bob Courier is here as well. And I think Mike, as president, is going to be addressing the board. Good evening.
Evening. Thanks for having us. So I just wanted to provide, we talked to Ryan Hurley regarding the Seller Savers. Wanted to let you know, as our landlord, you know, just part of the community economy. So as many organizations, we're facing, you know, difficulties as far as funding and membership. Illness and death within the club has, has taken its toll. And, you know, just trying to keep up with things for smaller, first, smaller numbers of people. So in March, the Seller Savers did vote to close the museum. Since then, we've been in contact, once word got out, we've been in contact with the fire department. And I've asked the members to hold off on any proceedings with closing the fire museum until we can explore other options. Spoke with Chief Shag, who was interested in, you know, getting involved in the fire department and to see what could be done to keep the museum open and get more participation. So we met with him in Hurley, May, and I think he really wanted to have this meeting with Susan and so forth.
And members of your organization had commented to see me previous as well. So I was, I am aware.
So we're not looking to close the, or, excuse me, this band, the organization. That was, the vote was to just close the museum. So some of the things that we do, participation with the town, you know, potentially still continue, like, following the craze. You know, do the electrical setup for the family day and so forth. But, you know, things like the train display, which, you know, brings in, you know, a thousand to twelve hundred people a year, as well as the museum being open and stuff like that. Even like the Christmas Eve stuff, Santa line and so forth, you know, would be, you know, would, you know, happen with the museum, it would be up in the air for continuation. So at our last meeting in May, after talking with the fire department, we did vote to have a meeting on the Fourth of June at seven thirty at the Fire Museum. We're gonna put it in the paper to try to get any kind of public interest and interest from the fire department, to see who's, who's interested in helping to keep things going. So hopefully, that, that will be successful, and then we get some people in, in the organization and see what we can do as far as expenditures. So, you know, you tighten their belt, just like many other organizations, and try to reduce waste and, you know, expenditures. Like, you know, everybody has a cell phone now, so, you know, we gave up the phone line and stuff like that, which, you know, has some cost saving, so... So, you know, we're doing what we can with what we have, so we just, you know, Brian had asked us to come in tonight and just, you know, provide you with an update, just to so everybody knows and everyone on the same page.
Well, I heard the train display was at stake. I said, no, I mean, seriously, I think that this is such a great Portland organization that when I found out that they were in trouble, I said, just the publicity of, you know, speaking at a meeting and inviting Mike and Bob to, to come and talk, you know, as a start because I, you know, we don't want to lose these guys in town. I know how much traffic it generates in the wintertime and how much, you know, how much good work that they do on top.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be more to come as we can, you know, see what we can do and, you know, hopefully on the Portland show, you know, it's interesting.
And I will report back to the second Mike after I meet with Chief Shag.
Okay.
If you may have some other ideas as well, certainly I'll bring that back to the board and it'll be noted in the, in the agenda so that you can come to it.
Yeah, Chief Shag can say that the fire department as a whole is strongly opposed to closing the museum, so.
Okay, good.
So we can see, we're hoping that we can pass one, I kind of said, okay, the members, let's hold off any, you know, get rid of stuff and so forth and so get rid of it.
I mean, I certainly recognize caring for a building is very expensive and it is a building that you have maintained very well and that you have made repairs to over the years and have conducted your museum in a very professional way. So we're very grateful to that and I certainly understand that your level of service and professionalism is such that you want to keep it at that level. So we'll need to address that and see what we can do to give you some, some assistance in the future.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming in. Thank you, and thank you, Ryan, for bringing to our attention. The next item on the agenda is simply a listing of some of the various activities that the town has been involved in. And I think it was Carl that had asked when we do proclamations or that when we have events that I let you know. We did honor two Sea Scouts for their promotion into various ranks, Jacob Beach and Jonathan Shaw. They're actually out-of-town residents and they participate in the Sea Scouts that are run by a town resident, Mr. George. The Exchange Club has gotten a proclamation from Kathy and me, we're both members along with Brian, and we recognize that they have been in service to the town for seventy years, which is a very long time, and they've done a tremendous job. Emergency Medical Services Week is this week and my office issued proclamation in notice of the good work that Emergency Medical Services provide to us and how life and death matters they're able to assist us with. They do a tremendous job through the fire department as well. And the Senior Center, also known as the Waverly Center in Portland, has received its national accreditation from a national organization. There's banners in front of the building. Carl, Kathy and I attended the celebration, which was Saturday. It was nicely attended and we really appreciate the work that the center's director and staff and all of the members of our community that have participated in that accreditation process. It's a five-year accreditation and it's due to the programming as well as the service aspects of that center to our community. So we celebrate and congratulate them for that. And if there's any questions on that, we'll move on to letter I.
Move that the town refund one thousand two hundred seventy-two thousand forty-eight cents to the House of Representatives.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Any questions?
Yes.
That was really a refund, how was it the other situation we talked about?
Michelle told me that that question had come up from our recording secretary and she said that that is the way that it is to be done. You have more information, Tom?
Well, I don't know what that one relates to. I didn't, I didn't know if that, I didn't know if that was related to active maintenance or if that was related to a refund of excess payment.
It's listed as a refund for excess payment, but I did not, I asked and that's what I was told. Sharon asked as well.
It was for the two, it was for the two different properties.
I thought that the taxes had been paid and then it was determined that they shouldn't have been paid and you're telling me they hadn't been paid?
I wanted to, I mean, again, there's two big lists, so that's a little confusing to me, but there's one property where, you know, it wasn't paid, it was outstanding, so it had to be paid.
Do you want us to pull it from the agenda until next time?
Okay.
So we'll just rescind and will you draw? Draw?
Never happened.
I don't know.
Okay. Yep.
And sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents to Brian G. Walsh.
Second. Signed by Kathy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Any status in committee reports? Any public comment? Cheryl?
I just want to share the pictures to the home, so just to let you know the implications you already know is. Oh, the boards, well. You have an extra one?
Which one?
Well, also, we have three, right? This is not taken care of. This is going to be a disaster because this particular vegetation is a disaster. I know the one too. Thank you.
General informal discussion?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry? What, one, one time? Sharon?
I, I need elaboration as far as the situation.
There were pictures shared with plants growing in a storm drain?
Storm drain.
Location?
It is the first storm drain on the right wing.
Is it, is it written on the badge?
Sure. Here, Street Two, Homer. Right behind the townhouse. Like a, I'm always.
Are, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Are, are the, what are these, like weeds in the, in the storm drains? That what you're, you're saying?
Yes, they're very invasive.
Well, they're going to come in because.
They're difficult to get rid of because obviously you can't use pesticides. They have to be taken out by the roots to continue.
When they clean the sumps, they usually do that.
No, but these, if you just take the top part of them out, they just keep growing and growing and growing.
Well, that's kind of the way storm drains work. I mean, if you got the weed throws seeds and it goes on the road and the water goes down the thing, they're going to end up in the storm drain. I mean, this is very.
This is a different kind of, you know.
You don't kind of plant that?
I don't know what's, I know it is creepy, but it has another meaning.
Okay.
Last year, if you've been to the fall, you should have seen that stuff coming out of the drain.
Okay.
And it's not only coming through the drain, be assured that it is encasing the pipe.
Thank you.
But that, this is our regular storm drain?
Yes.
And we have, we have maintenance schedules on cleaning the sumps, right?
Yes.
It's usually one, you could take care of that.
General informal discussion?
Yeah, on that point, I just was thinking that, Stunna Storm Drains brought another thought to mind. Living in the downtown area, you, I, over the years observed a flushing of the water mains periodically and the water would run down the street as a, and that's kind of a regular maintenance procedure. And I cannot remember recently that happening and I was wondering what the schedule, if in fact it has happened and I dismissed it, or whether we've changed our maintenance procedures for flushing the mains. I guess that would be for Rick, but.
Yeah. Certainly happens.
And the other issue is that I know we are not sidewalk, I don't want to take up a lot of time tonight for various reasons, but I know you folks walked, the other selectmen walked, I walked, there was a member of the audience who walked with me. And I think we got to make, set up another meeting. And I think it's important to go, to move ahead with deciding whether we're going to do something with the sidewalks. There's one particular area between Spruce Street and as you, right opposite, that short street, Spruce Street, and then the post office.
Right.
At Fairview. And there's a run of about a hundred and fifty feet where it's a dangerous sidewalk. You have a five or six inch gap in the sidewalk from the tree.
Yeah, I have pictures of that.
Yeah, and that, that really should be tended to. It's, I, we don't know, I don't know who owns that. It's the state, town, the property owner. The setback from the road, I know sometimes is problematic in terms of finding out who is the owner. But clearly, to me at least, the trees were causing the damage for almost all of that. And if we own the trees, we have to fix that sidewalk before somebody gets hurt.
That's state road. That's on Main Street. It's above the Green Victoria.
Just the one?
You've got the picture there.
And now that we've identified it, we have to rely on it, right?
Well, if it's a stick.
You can, you can pay to have it, have it fixed, but there, there is, there is an issue of the whole of Main Street.
If, if we're saying that the state has to fix.
How does that work, suit with the state?
I called the state and asked them to make repairs and I'm not certain what their answer would be in terms of sidewalks. In terms of the road, they tell me they stop at the gutter line and they do not care anything further in.
And so their setback would be X number of feet?
That goes back to what we talked about, right?
Yes, yes. I have a call-in to them on another matter and I will ask them about sidewalks on their state roads, but, and I'll report back to you.
Yeah, well, if it's, yeah, because if it's clearly the state, then maybe people should be aware through, I'd be happy to, to put out some kind of press release, maybe somebody else would and say, if, if it is in fact their responsibility, then it should be fixed. I mean, it's a, it's a definite hazard and it should.
How would it be, I guess this is a rhetorical question, in terms of the town's not owning the road, but the state owns the road, other than in front of Brownstone Intermediate School? We own the school and we make repairs to the school's sidewalk. But I, you know, that is a question that I think we have on the table and we have.
The state owns the road. Owns way in from the road.
Yeah. I don't care about the sidewalk.
Yeah, it is awful.
It's town sidewalk. Town is responsible for maintaining and repairing and replacing, et cetera. I think that's what the advice was that you received from the council.
In terms of town roads, I don't know about the state.
Right, town roads, right. So then this is a definition, this is a state road. I don't know, I would, I would think it would be the state's responsibility.
And, and that does happen.
Okay.
But I will, I do have a call-in to the business.
Okay, thank you.
Division, I'll go first. Thank you.
On that sidewalk, on note, on the sidewalk work for funding of the, any work that's required. Senator Leniris has, I believe, passed a bill, or the bill's going to be passed, for improvements to sidewalks and infrastructure for bonding. Instead of being a twenty-year bond, they're going to extend it out to a forty-year bond for, for payments.
By the, by the town or the state or?
I think they're, they're getting the money, I think it was Fed at their, or state is giving money. It was used to be a twenty-year payback. Instead of a twenty-year payback, they've extended it out to a forty-year payback. They amortize it, you know, lower for the price on the bond for such things as sidewalks and, and.
Well, I, I wish him, I wish him luck if we can get some money, but I, I did.
No, I'm not saying we're getting the money. I'm just saying that we did bonding or, or.
Oh, for the bucket.
On the bonding, instead of it being a twenty-year payback on the bond, it would be a forty-year payback, so we reduced it. And I think if we did anything like that, that would be a good one on sidewalks considering, you know, the statistical life of the sidewalk is probably longer than, you know, ten or fifty, hopeless ten or fifty years.
Yeah, there was, there was, there's another bill, a bonding bill, and in that, the bad news is that we had, back in two thousand and seven, there was an appropriation for bonding for Portland for two hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks. That was two thousand and seven. It was rescinded in this bill. So they, they, and that shows that, you know, the money, the money can be, the bonding can go forward, but that doesn't mean that the town necessarily get the money. That was two thousand and seven. There were a couple of other appropriations. One was for a museum, two for fifty thousand, it was in there. But that was, there was two hundred thousand dollars, but it didn't, never, never got it.
Susan, I would reiterate that at the very least, I'm going to photograph this Brian has here, where, near Boarding House.
Yeah.
I think that's what one of the ones we're talking about, at the very least, the town should be coordinating, coordinating it off, painting it orange, warning people, I mean, does, does say, he's over the top in terms of the defect. That's particularly what I'm looking at.
I understand, but you also, I, I need to tell you that, that isn't the only sidewalk and we will, we will do our best, but I, I can tell you, we can't get to every single sidewalk. I mean, it's a big job.
I'm not talking about repairing it. I'm talking about going out with some spray paint.
I'm talking about just even doing that, right? There's, there's quite a few of them that we should, that we do.
I, I can't.
But like an orange can of spray paint, you're saying just a.
Like everything else we have to do. You have to realize we will work on this. I just don't want to promise them.
I'm just, we've had a conversation about it before where it costs too much money to do it, I'd indicate at the very least, there should be a warning for that. I don't think it's that, that humorous to go out and.
Right on the sidewalk, watch your step.
Well, you can highlight.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not being seeticious, I'm saying.
And I guess you got to prioritize it. So if this is on Main Street, people walking, I'd say that might be number one, that's all.
It's, it's a bad one. But it's a, I believe it was a tree root one.
Yeah, it's a tree, right?
It's a tree root one and then, and to fix it, you got to take, probably take the tree.
And I think this, I think that you also have to consider, and we've talked about this many times, if you want to really have an effect and to repair these things, we need more money to do it. And you need to bond some money to take care of roads and sidewalks.
That's right.
Period.
About bonding, maybe about forty-year bond.
That's what you have to do, yes.
Instead of a twenty, you can push it out to a four-year.
Because it does cost money. You're right. So we will begin to prepare that for you so that you can look at how you would like to go about paying for it.
Yes, money. Bonding, I guess, is the, well, we might have to talk about bonding in the near future anyway, maybe we should put it all together and.
Actually, there's another one on, on the other side of Main Street.
It's, it's bad news.
And that, you want to put the trees on the other side.
Yeah, and I think as this board has discussed, you really need a program for addressing these matters because every winter, every season, the roots change, the frost eaves occur, and you need to keep up with this. And if you're going to take it on and, and change as the ordinance is written, and that's fine, we have to fund it. That is the responsibility that we're taking on.
The last thing, I'll be. done some work in, in Old Saybrook and other communities, and I told them I'd meet with them, and I'll let selectmen know if anybody wants to meet with them. It's a different procedure, it's a lot less expensive, and I don't know whether it'd be applicable, they like shave, where there's the gaps in the sidewalk, and the theory is you get rid of the gaps, and that makes, it makes the sidewalks, and you put them in compliance, and it's, it's probably about a third of the cost of regular, a fourth of the cost of regular sidewalks, according to this gentleman. I'll let you know, though, if anybody wants to meet with him.
Yeah, that is certainly a good option to make this on there.
I've noticed you're walking it now, but the spray water is here, there's a lot of grass, and everything growing up in the cracks in between the...
Yep. If I say something, I get to it.
I can do that tomorrow. Howard, you're not...
Ready? Okay. I'm gonna stand because I can't see, I can't see everybody. But I, I just wanna make the board aware that, as you know, there are tweakings going on, should we say, little more tweaks, to the contract with the exploratory park. And this, what I'm going to propose, probably should wait until those are concluded. But to make you aware of it, we have a significant amount of money invested in the riverfront and in the Arch Pavilion on Main Street. And on the riverfront, it's over a million dollars with the pavilion and the, the bathrooms going in there and the music pavilion that's going in there. And the Brownstone Quorum, and full disclosure, I'm a member of the Brownstone Quorum, the Brownstone Quorum has, this group of volunteers have been maintaining the riverfront for many years, and raises money to do this. But with the new things going in, there's gonna be more maintenance involved. The Brownstone Quorum is, is agreeable to, to doing the footwork on all of this and so on. But there's equipment and landscaping and so on that needs to be done on, it's the riverfront, and will need to be done in the future to maintain the buildings down there that we have. The Arch Pavilion is a good example, because we raised about $100,000, including in-kind servants and so on, to put that up. And if you look at it closely, and I advise you, if you haven't, to take a look at it, the stain and paint, the paint stain is completely off of several of the pillars, the upright pillars, already, and that really needs to be repainted, or it's going to deteriorate. So what I'm going to be proposing, when the work with the exploratory park is completed, is that we take a certain percentage of the town revenue from the exploratory park and put it toward maintenance of the riverfront and the Arch Pavilion, so that these can be maintained. Otherwise, as we know, if there's not a specific way of doing this, these, these things will, will deteriorate. In addition, there are improvements that are always ongoing on the park. We, we are hoping to put in a labyrinth in the park for people to meditate. If you're not familiar with these labyrinths, I can explain them to you, but I don't want to take time now. And that will require the landscaping and so on. I know the quorum is going to do the work on it, but will need help in the, in providing the, the bushes and so on that, that go into this. So that, what I've proposed in this, and I'm, hand it around. Yeah, let me pass it around. We've got more than enough here.
Three. Yep.
Uh, is that every year, as you read in here, a percentage of the revenue from the exploratory park be allocated to the Brownstone Quorum in order to maintain and improve the And if the Brownstone Quorum should in the future cease to exist, then this money would be allocated to the Park and Recreation Committee Commission for that same purpose on there. I think it's important to get this going, because, as I say, the Arch Pavilion desperately needs a new coat of paint right now. As you can see, added due to this is the yearly, this is in the fiscal year, monies from the exploratory park, and the town has received, just in general, I think it's good to note, a million four hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand, fifty cents up to now, from the exploratory park. This is more than it costs to obtain the property for the, for the town. I think the town spent, correctly, from wrong, about a million fifty, million fifty thousand for that property. So it certainly has been a good, if you will, investment at this point. But I think some of that revenue should be turned back into the riverfront in order to improve it and maintain it. So that, we don't have to discuss it now, but as, as I say, this is sort of a heads-up. When the, when the contract with the exploratory park is set, then I would like to discuss this in full, and I'll make a form, a formal proposal for this.
When do we have a set date for the, do we have a set for the new contract?
Well... That's mostly because when it was written, 2005, I believe, things have changed considerable. And in reviewing it with the, with the less, let me see, there are some areas of the agreement that need to be revisited, so...
Will we look at a potential increase in building usage in town? Well, we look, you know, increase in the rate from 15... Per percentage.
Well, we're still discussing...
Because that would affect, I, my only concern with this is that we literally just voted on the budget this, you know, a week ago, Monday.
Well, that's why I have it in there for next year.
Oh, well, no, 'cause it says here, 2015 to 2016.
Well, this is a draft.
Commencing with the fiscal year. That, yeah, 'cause I don't mind talking about it.
This was a draft.
2016 to 2017.
Yeah, this is a draft, that's why I don't wanna...
'Cause, 'cause I mean, we just...
This is subject to change, I just wanna get the idea before you.
Okay, okay.
And, and put the importance of it before you.
Creative power, creative power.
Any other informal discussion items?
I have, I'll, I'll send it to you, I got a letter from MDC, Mr. Jellison, because the Water and Sewer Commission wanted to do a tour of some of the facilities at MDC, and they've set it up Wednesday, June 17th, or Tuesday, June 23rd. They go from about nine o'clock, they're gonna go to different, I have the itinerary, I just don't have it here right now, couldn't download it. I'll send it to you tomorrow. To go see, first, of compensating some of the water things, they go to a filtration system place, then have lunch, and they'll do the full tour. I'm just, they're a few days, so I don't know what day you'd possibly be good for anybody who wanna go up and see it. They said Tues, Wednesday, the 20, uh, the 17th, or Tuesday, the 23rd. They said go from about nine, nine at the MDC headquarters to about 3, 3:30, we would be back, and then they would take that split lunch and go, and go through two or three different...
But now 23 is better for me.
It says here, it's right here, it says, "Really expect tour to take most of the day, beginning at MDC headquarters approximately 9:00 AM, traveling to one of our two main drinking water reservoirs in Barkhamsted, our hydroelectric facility in Colebrook, stopping for lunch, and then continuing to one of our main water filtration plants in West Harper Bloomfield, and returning to MDC headquarters around approximately 3:00 to 3:30." So they want to know what date, that the town like, it said, any of our officials will take a look. Or at a later date.
So next, we will send it out, and selectmen will send a page to look at their candidates.
I, I, I could send you this first.
Yes, Michelle, send it.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other informal notes to come before I try? I have nothing, you are the...
I'll say one thing about MDC. GPTV yesterday had a documentary on the MDC water system, and showed when, when started in Barkhamsted and everything, and it's copyrighted in 2015. So I don't know if it's available off that or they have, so...
Thank you.
But it's interesting.
Very interesting, yeah. I think we all got a book on it, too, on their history.
Yeah.
It was very interesting.
Thank you.
I didn't see the paper, the documentary, I'd like to see that.
A motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Sent by Howard.
She's...